Exactly.
That should probably go in the magazine.
I think so. And I noticed that let's do it some escalation, a kid at school and you know, if I do it, you're not the bad guy. I can make that one that comes up, you know, just like nothing pushing. What did everybody do? Well, okay, buddy. We were circling anyway, so. It worked just fine. That was, that was fantastic. It was really good. Yeah, thank you. I was gonna cover Friday. I say, you know, we don't get to like, oh, we pay our full months' tax once. Very good job. I find those very positive, like real life or serious emotions.
Welcome to the August twenty eighth work session. Let's get started. We have a couple of our student board of representatives here tonight. We have Maren Hoffman and we have Kiara Teeples. And the first thing we're gonna get into is the assessment update.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Kathleen Granis, Director of Academic Performance and Data Services, and I have your assessment update for two thousand and twenty four. And so overall, we're gonna dig into CMASS, ELA, and math. We're gonna take a couple of different lenses with that, and then we'll dig into the college board suite of assessments. And so if you follow the news at all, you might be seeing that the embargo was a little different this year. So there were two levels of embargo, and there's still some data that is embargoed until tomorrow. So you'll see more stuff in the Gazette, but many of, a lot of it was released on Monday. All the data that you're gonna see tonight is you're allowed to see, and it's because we're allowed to share our district and the state data. And then, just so you know, there's data from the CDE Assessment Unit and the Accountability Unit, where the Accountability Unit data was available. We use that because it's aligned with the performance frameworks. So sometimes in reporting, though, you may see variance in the data, and it's become, because it comes from those different offices. So digging into CMASS, there's different metrics that we'll look at. Tonight, we'll talk about both achievement and growth in CMASS. In the achievement category, we'll talk about the performance bands. So the, we'll talk about, when we say proficiency, we're talking about students in the level four and five meets and exceeds expectations. And then we'll also talk quite a bit about the mean scale score, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that here. But in terms of our CMASS testing, we had about ninety-three percent of our students take CMASS compared to statewide. They had about eighty-eight percent take it. So I just wanna say to all the parents who are here tonight or might be listening, hey, thank you for trusting us. The data of each individual student on state assessment and other assessments helps us to serve you better. And then the tested grades in CMASS are third through eighth grade for ELA and math. And then for science, we just test grades five, eight, and eleven. And really, the assessments were very similar to the past years, but maybe one change is that science, it's the first year that'll be in the performance frameworks, but it was normed for the first time last year. So digging into ELA, first, looking at proficiency across four years. Twenty nineteen, omitting twenty twenty because of the pandemic, twenty twenty-one because of very low participation statewide. Then we've got twenty-two, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four data. Last year, oh, and then you see the state here and the district, all grades combined. Last year, our proficiency rate was equal with the state. This year, our proficiency rate is two, uh, two percent higher. So now digging into that same data a little deeper and breaking it down by grade level, you see third all the way to eighth grade across those same four years. It's grade level performance, and that's very helpful for us for program evaluation, looking how third graders compared to third graders in previous years. Three of the six grades are at higher levels. Third grade, four percent higher, sixth grade, three percent higher, seventh grade, five percent higher, and the other three grades really hovering in the same vicinity with no significant dips. Okay, so that was that proficiency lens. Now, um, we've got something new this year. These next tables provide school and grade level specific information, and it's year over year, over two years, mean scale score increase. What is the mean scale score? CDE says it's a numerical value that summarizes student performance. So, and scale scores can't be used to compare across grades, like comparing third to fourth grade, but it can be used in the way we're gonna use it today to really highlight that, like, kind of program evaluation thing. So this model was borrowed from our superintendent. It's a bit of a sports analogy, and the scorecards compare the schools to themselves, which we really like that. And schools with higher mean scaled scores, like some in the seven fifties, have an additional challenge since they are already exceeding the state level. So here's Falcon's scorecard. Four out of their five scores has a nice increase in the average scale score. Here's the iConnect zone, the more complicated one, because they have forty-eight tested grades in third through eighth grade, a little more than all the other zones combined. So since instructional leadership at these schools lies at the school level, we didn't combine them in an overall score at the end, but you can see here, four of their ten schools had increase in scale score in reading. And now back to district-operated schools. Power Zone, just like the Falcon Zone, has fifteen levels that we're looking at. So four of their five schools has up. Sand Creek Zone also, four of five schools increased their mean scale score. So we wanted to know at the zone level, how much increase did we see? So that's the next slide here. So that's where we see the total for those three zones. Okay, so now changing gears to math. Same metrics across math. So in, um, last year, we were four percent lower than the state in math. In CMASS, third through eighth grade, this year, we were only two percent lower than the state, so, and two percent higher than where we were last year. And in, uh, in terms of all the grade levels, five out of the six grade levels increased proficiency from last year. In looking at our scorecards, Falcon Zone also still had here in math, four or five schools with that increase. In iConnect Zone, six of their ten schools had increase. In Power Zone, four of fives also have that positive increase, and then Sand Creek Zone as well. Okay, so this one, we definitely get points crazy for math. Falcon Zone had sixty-eight scale score points higher. So on the school performance frameworks that are gonna be released next week, the increase of the school's scaled score affects their achievement portion of the framework. It counts as about forty percent of the elementary and middle school frameworks. Okay, so speaking of the school performance frameworks, uh, let's dig into growth. The growth in elementary, middle schools counts for sixty percent of the framework at those grade levels. So in this slide, there's a lot in here, I'm gonna unpack it a bit. At the very bottom, you'll see the scale. Student growth percentiles, or SGP's we call them, range from one to ninety-nine, and we're looking at the median for different populations, for different schools. The meeting growth percentiles compare like students year over year, so students have two data points. And then right above the scale score, you'll see some bands, and these are associated with the SPF. You can see, kind of in the middle of things, a little bit right between approaching and meets, the district, right above that, the state. And if you look way over to the right, for those of us in the audience, there's Stetson, wow, at a median growth percentile of sixty-seven. So I reached, yes, yes, they deserve it. Reached out to Principal Lori McCoy and asked her, to what does she attribute her school's growth in ELA? And she shared that their work to establish meaningful data-driven PLCs with admin support was key. She mentioned purposeful planning with teaching to specific standards as important, and there are two prevailing questions that became a mantra. How are we teaching this, and what is our data telling us? Okay, so transitioning to elementary math. Rocky Mountain Elementary leads the district with their meeting growth percentile of seventy-one. On the graph, you may notice that, yes, uh, that does not meet category has also popped in. We've got two in that category. And then at the top of the meets category is Woodman Hills. And so I talked with Bethany, she feels that the growth is due to several years of hard work. And she says a huge contributor to the growth is this very intentional instructional focus that they've had. A tier one is a major focus. She said eighteen of her twenty-five teachers participated in the district offered mission DNA professional development for math. She also spoke about a focus on standards, that in math, student discourse and conversations have been increasing student engagement. She said that every student receives intervention, not just those below, and that overall, she feels like it's been the hard work of students and teachers every day, meeting students where they are, that makes a difference. Okay, so transitioning now to middle school, this is ELA. We're looking at the growth. To the far right there, you see, right between meets and exceeds is Skyview Middle School. We're gonna hear more about them later. And NVA barely fit on the graph, kudos to them. We have more schools in the approaching band than meets here. So interestingly, the state's performance is at that approaching band, too. So still work to do. And then in middle school math, beyond the weight that student growth percentiles hold on the SPF, the student growth potential is important because it's about each individual student, compared to like students, and how much did they grow? And I think you all agree with me that growing students is what we're all about. Okay, so another set of graphs we have here combine about last year's growth with last year's achievement, and it puts them on this scatter plot. Each school is represented, the first number is the median growth percentile, the second is the mean scale score, so numbers we've already talked about. And together, they can tell us where we need to pay attention and possibly visit, pivot, and where we need to learn more about what's going on and replicate it. So the district is at the center of everything, and the first quadrant we're talking about is the lower growth, lower achievement quadrant. We have four, uh, five schools that have that relatively lower in both areas in reading. In the next yellow quadrant, we have the higher achievement but lower growth, and there are six schools there. The largest amount of schools is in that relatively higher growth and lower achievement category. If they continue to have high growth, that will eventually lead to high achievement, so that's exciting. And then the last quadrant is high growth, high achievement, and we had a couple of schools there, but one I wanted to point out was Skyview. Mike Weider and his team believe that the results are a direct correlation to the work and focus that they place on creating a school culture where staff and students feel successful. Their instructional focus includes seven steps to a language-rich environment that has increased the level of achievement in their students. The staff and students at Skyview believe in the work that they're doing. They're excited to continue to make Skyview the best place to learn, work, and lead. And then now transitioning over to math. It's definitely been a focus in our district, right? You guys, the Board of Education has a strategic objective focused on math, and we have some nice clustering up high in math. And again, I think it's, uh, well, I think it's a celebration of the work of our teachers, our students, our leaders across the schools and the district, and with a professional development that's provided, that is so important. We see the district here in the center, and there's the schools in that lower growth and achievement area. Lower growth, higher achievement, there are just three schools in this one. In terms of that higher growth and lower achievement, we've got six schools there. We know growth leads the way to achievement. And then in the high growth, high achievement, we have eight schools. So kudos to the board for prioritizing math. Okay, so now our last section of tonight's presentation, oh, well, actually, right before the last part, let's talk about science, so still in CMASS. So fifth, eighth, and eleventh. The data here is through the lens of how it counts on those accountability frameworks. So blue is exceeds, meets, and then red is below. Just a word about participation on science. Our district-wide participation rate was ninety percent. The eleventh graders participated at a sixty-nine percent rate, and statewide, forty-nine percent. So we do, you know, have concerns about the validity of the science data at the high school level, but our elementary and middle schools, I think that's pretty representative. Okay, so in terms of high school, the big news here is that there was a change to the, the format of the test. And so two thousand and twenty-four is the first time it was, um, yes, is you guys, did you guys take the test? In the digital format, what, did it rock your world? Yes, okay, and apparently, that is representative of the entire state. So the statewide scores were down, and we believe that math was most affected. So, and you'll see that in our data, too. So the first slide here is the evidence-based reading/writing data across the whole district combined, and then it's just across the year. So you see our district forty-nine trend, and this includes all the charter schools. And this shows the mean scale score across two thousand and nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, and last spring. Essentially, ninth grade is about a half mean scale score lower, tenth grade a half higher. Eleventh is two points higher than last year. And in terms of these participation rates for PSAT, statewide participation's about ninety-three percent, district-wide ninety-two percent, and with, you know, the impact of GOAL, GOAL hovering around the eighty percent participation, depending on the grade level. So now diving into EBRW, which is evidence-based reading/writing, just essentially the reading test. The data is now just ninth grade, and now it's broken out by each one of our schools. You can see, you know, I was gonna focus mostly on our big coordinated high schools. So if you look at, you know, Falcon High, then Sand Creek, and Red, and then Vista at the end there. In this case, on ninth grade, Falcon High School had the highest. In terms of what percent of GOAL is meeting, a part of that district aggregate, only twenty percent, or twenty-eight percent of ninth graders are goal-tested population. But as we get to tenth grade, I think I did already go to tenth grade, that's about forty percent of our district population, and calling out Falcon High School with a four thirty-seven as the highest in the district, just for those district-operated, the big coordinated high schools. And then when we get to eleventh grade, GOAL is forty-five percent of the district's population at eleventh. Oh, yeah. It's hard to see, isn't it? Oops, sorry, whoever made these, I'm gonna talk to the psychometrician. Okay, uh, so that's, that's ELA, our reading. And then, uh, if we do dive into the reading SGP, um, we can see, uh, that the growth in the high school is calculated by tenth and eleventh grade students with a previous Colorado College Board score. It can't be calculated from eighth into ninth in reading. Uh, but, uh, shout-out to Sand Creek High School with a fifty SGP. That's really the highest of our comprehensive high schools. And then, same data in math, uh, here. And you can see, uh, that impact that we were talking about, that this being seen statewide, of being a little bit lower. And we know that, that this, um, phenomenon makes it harder for us to know where we are. But looking forward to growth, we know that this is an area in need. And we're so grateful for the board, for their strategic priority, and for our coordinator of math and two math coaches to support our high schools in this work. And so, um, and then in, uh, math, uh, ele- uh, tenth grade, I think I skipped, oh, this is tenth grade. Vista Ridge was the highest, um, and also in eleventh grade. Okay, so, the median growth percentile for math, uh, here you can see, um, majority of our, uh, bigger high schools down here in the, um, approaching category. So there's, definitely, there was a lot to celebrate tonight. An increase in growth and achievement primarily at that elementary and middle school levels. Our schools receive the copies of the printed scores, and they're working to get them to families. And, uh, just a quick note to families, I really encourage you to dig into the results with your child. Knowing these report, uh, results are important to you will help students to do their best. And I believe testing is a life skill, many jobs require tests. Uh, did any of your jobs require tests? Mine did. Um, we know jobs like plumbers, waitresses, pest controlmen, teachers, doctors, cybersecurity people, mailmen, and even to get your driver's license, high school students requires a test. So, thanks for your time and your attention tonight, and I'll just, um, bat it over to you to see if you had any questions.
Let's start with our student board. Do you have any questions about some of these test results?
I have a quick question. Um, so you talked about, like, the science portion?
Yes.
Um, and so, you mentioned that, like, not a ton of, well, comparatively, not as many students maybe took the science assessment. Um, so is that something that you're seeing in, like, the future years, that more students will probably take that? Or is that normal, like, to have not as many students?
Yes, statewide, it's, the participation in science is low, less than half, right? District, we have more. And I think that, you know, it really comes down to, um, you know, helping students see a purpose, right? And meaning in it. And, you know, I think a challenge at high school is, um, how many science classes, um, have you taken in high school? Awesome, good. So, so sometimes, students don't take science every year. And so, um, that does cause a challenge. That's a great question, thank you. I, I just wonder to student board reps, can I ask them a question real quick?
Yes, please.
You know, with the, the issue with math and it being lower, I just wondered if you found it harder to do scratch work when you're on the computer? Or less, I don't know, like, worse, you think students might be less inclined to do the scratch work?
Um, I think when it comes to math specifically, like, I, I can speak from my school. I think we see a lot of kids, like, like, this is gonna sound horrible, but like, a lack of attention.
Yeah.
So, I think when it came to math on the computer and, like, the multiple choice questions, they were like, nobody wanted to solve any work, or...
You can multiple guess instead.
Yeah, our teacher just asked who wanted scratch paper, and like, two people said yes. And so, so I think that's where you see it, um, with the multiple choice options. Not that it wasn't on paper, but when they could see it in front of them, it's just like, there's, there's no need to go above and beyond.
Um, and from, like, my perspective, I remember when I was taking, um, the PSAT a couple months ago, I was getting over a cold, and I just wasn't feeling really great. But I, I was there at the school, and the kid in front of me, like, fell asleep on my computer. Like, he was, like, sitting like this, and like, whoop, like that. And so, I feel like the testing environment kind of does make it hard to pay attention, but there's not really a ton we can do about that. So I think it's up to the student, you know, like, do they, do they want to be there? Do they wanna participate? You know, like, or just, do they like the format? It's so individual that I think it's hard to tell. Cause I like the math online, cause you have a little Desmos calculator, and it is so helpful. I loved that, but I know not everybody does. And so I think it's hard to please everyone, um, but that's just my experience, so.
Thank you for sharing it.
Director Schmidt?
Kathleen, I just wanna thank you for answering all my questions. Um, everything else that I had, you pretty much covered tonight. I took a couple more notes, so, thank you so much.
Oh, for sure.
Director Heil?
And I don't have any questions. And the reason I don't have any questions is because this is such a thorough presentation. I, I really love that you're taking the numbers and you're dicing them up, and you're, um, giving us, um, multiple views of them, to, ways to consider them. And also, you're contextualizing the information for us so that when we, we see a, uh, an anomaly, we can understand it. So, great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Right?
I just was going to kind of call out and comment on Allies, because I think this is important to the way District Forty-Nine operates, and the intelligent risk we've taken in having a program like Allies. When we look at those scatter plots, and you see Allies is low achievement, but incredibly high growth.
Yes, yes.
Um, Allies caters to a specific group of students who, if they were in our typical comprehensive schools, might not actually have that level of growth.
Yes.
But running a program like Allies requires being willing to take the hit when the SPF on the school isn't where people think they should be. Because when you have low growth, you're not, it's gonna be very difficult to get to a performance or an exceeds performance level. Yet, in the long term, we're helping that group of students reach a, but, reach their potential, and they wouldn't have had that opportunity otherwise. And it's why it's so incredibly important to have that growth as a significant component in how we evaluate schools, and why it's important to be intelligent as a board, um, when we make decisions about different programs, despite what the color rating ends up being on some of these systems. Allies is an excellent example of that, and GOAL, for other reasons, is also an example. And there's a reason why no other district in the state runs programs like either one of them. And some of that is because of the hit you take as a district when you're willing to take that risk. But it's the right thing to do for all of our students. And so I think it's important, every time we have something like this, to remind our community of, this is why we do what we do. And these kids are worth that investment, and worth taking whatever hit, cause that feels like giving us as a district, in, in the paper, um, next week.
Director Davola?
I love seeing the data, and you guys presented it, just like, uh, Director Heil said, in a way that was very user-friendly, to the point where I went through it, uh, last night and the night before, and I understood everything that I was seeing. Um, so it was very helpful, the way that you guys formatted it. Uh, this shows that we have some celebrations, some schools that were really hitting the mark and even higher. Um, it also shows that we still have a lot of work to do. And we're willing to, to put in that hard work. And I know all of our principals and our teachers are willing to put in that hard work to continue the growth that has been occurring. So, I'm, I'm excited to continue partnering with the district to reach our goals.
I also, I, I like the way this was laid out. And I even like the one chart where you show the district without GOAL. Not that I want to see that happen, but it's a really good visual representation of the impact. But it's like Director Livia Wright said, it's worth doing, it's worth doing. And so there was a lot of different celebrations in here, and there were several areas of concern in that, you know, I know how hard everyone's been working because academic improvement has been a focus every year since I've been on the board. And so I also appreciate that you shared what some of the highest-performing schools, what their principals had to share. And I know we've done a lot with, um, Mission DNA. I hope that's, continues to be applied with fidelity across the zones. And that we can use some of this data to look at areas where we need more support. Because I know that, uh, we've talked about earned autonomy with the zones. Peter's brought that up several times. But that earned autonomy is wonderful, but if there's areas where you need help, it's good. When it was first divided into zones, it was supposed to be innovation and to, and to share best practices. So I think anytime there's, there's different strengths or weaknesses within different zones, to kind of focus intervention within that area. So, of course, I, I'm really heartened by a lot of these. I'm always optimistic and, and would like to see larger growth. And I don't ever like being below the state average. That's just, I'm speaking for myself, I want to meet or exceed the state always.
We all do.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, like I said, it's just, uh, really, it's exciting to see a lot of this data. Do you know, do we have yet the school performance framework, or an idea of what that's gonna look like as far as the...
We'll be reviewing those within twenty-four hours, and then there'll be a lot more conversation to follow on after that. I'm, I'm mildly optimistic in general, and mildly irritated in some specifics, and mildly, more than mildly thrilled in some others. But we don't have those final calculations.
Yeah, I think that's what they're now releasing tomorrow. I didn't know if you had kind of a general idea from what you have seen. And, uh, I was also heartened to know that there's a process in place to contest things you might disagree with, which, uh, which is worthwhile to know. So, thank you very much.
Can I actually make one more silly comment?
Yeah, Director Livia Wright, sorry.
Sorry, um, it just came to me after thinking through what the student said to Ms. Granis as well. I find it interesting that we had the state, statewide, those numbers went down. Then we had our students comment on the difficulty in that, in the perception of taking it on the computer. And then, my brain went back to my parent role and sitting in the SAC two years ago when we were looking at math curriculum adoption, and how incredibly important it was from the student perspective to be allowed to have physical texts again, and physical handouts that they could do their work on, rather than just the digital component. That, that was something that was discussed at length with, in SAC, with the math teachers, um, both from the student perspective and the parent perspective at Falcon High School. And so, I think our students are sending us a message at multiple levels that, hey, we need our paper to do our math, and please don't make us just look at a screen. I don't know how we get that message to the state then for when we evaluate it, but certainly, we're hearing it in multiple different ways, um, from our students who are actually the learners.
Thank you, that's an excellent point.
Good evening, um, Heather Diaz, the county manager for the finance department. Uh, tonight, we are bringing you this year's federal impact aid survey, uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The actual survey date this year is... I did it like three or four times, so. Uh, is November fifth this year. Uh, it gives us a little bit of extra time during October break to get everything ready. Um, these forms will be due back to the student's school no later than November twenty-second. That gives me some time, a few months, to have this to the US Department of Education by the end of January. And, um, we do participate in this because we have more than three percent of our student body is somehow federally connected. And this program exists because, as you know, school districts are funded by, uh, property taxes. And if you live or are federally connected, federal property is non-taxable. So we participate in this, and it generates every year between, somewhere between five hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars. So, any questions?
One quick comment.
Director Livia Wright, yeah.
Smart to do it in November for a second reason, and that's, having been the spouse of someone who was technically a guard or reservist his whole career, but spent about eighty percent of his time on active duty, units, because the fiscal, federal fiscal year is October one through September thirtieth, units often can't cut orders in October. So usually, they start to run out of money in mid-September. So the guys basically have, guys and gals have kind of forced off time from about mid-September to about the end of October when the funding comes through. So, they could be on orders every other month of the year, but if you did it in October, they were gonna look like they weren't active duty. And, you know, I had four kids who, depending on what date you picked, sometimes we got to check the date, and sometimes we didn't. So, I think that that's smart.
Largely last year, so.
Any other questions or input?
I have a question, sorry, I'm talking a lot this evening. Um, just curious, like, is, is this form, like, required for all students to turn back in? Cause like, I know, like, I've gotten it in the past and wondered, like, okay, if this doesn't apply to me, do I still need to turn it in? Cause I'm not connected to the military.
It's not required. Um, we do, the elementary schools try to get a hundred percent returned. That's largely our military population. Um, and I think the younger they are, they're more willing to bring it back. We worked last year with Lisa's department, the Department of Defense grants. And we partnered with them to make it more of an incentive to have it turned back at the element, or at the middle school and high schools. And we had a larger turnout. Um, it isn't required, and especially if you're not connected, but the elementary schools like to have a hundred percent turnaround. So, they do ask and ask for it to be turned in, so.
That's the way your school's trying to make sure they didn't miss somebody?
Yeah.
The only way they don't, didn't, know they didn't miss someone is if everyone turns it in, even if you're not impacted. Otherwise, we end up with some kids who, for, who their parents signed it, but somehow it didn't make it back to the school. And so they, they're trying to make sure they get every kid, and the only way to do that is to make sure they basically make you feel like it's required.
And we do use the numbers that we have of these returned to qualify for additional Department of Defense grants. They rely heavily on these surveys as well.
And Mission DNA is funded by that, correct?
Yes, correct.
So our math, um, a large part of our math improvement strategy is related to making sure that we have appropriate information so that we can apply for those funds, and that helps all our students.
Director Heil?
And I just wanted to make sure that the community is very well aware of how important this is. You know, we serve a large number of, uh, military-connected kids in particular. And, um, this is an important source of funding to allow us to continue to support them. So, uh, if we are missing kids, uh, that means we're missing funding. If we're missing funding, then, um, we're gonna have to make some tough choices. So, you know, please, uh, do whatever you can to make sure that we get every one of these back that, uh, that we need.
I had a question, so is the outreach to get the forms back? Cause you said we're more than three percent. Do you know approximately what percent we are of milita- it's hard to tell.
I don't.
Did, is it each individual school that does the outreach to the families, trying to get these forms back?
Yeah.
What other strategies do you have to help?
Last year, like I said, we worked with Lisa's department, uh, and I, I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, we did a pizza party for the...
Yes, we, we need that for schools. So the grant that we just wrote, um, that we're hoping to find out September thirtieth, for Mission DNA at high school level, secondary level, was because we did a pizza party. That was cheap. The zone leaders paid for it, and it was cheap, and we got a lot of forms that we were able to write a grant for them.
Yeah. And it's about, I print about twenty thousand pieces of paper every October. So, it's a large amount that goes out. We send every form, we deliver them to the charter schools as well. The only ones that we do online is GOAL. But other than that, it's a piece of paper that goes home with every student. We found that that was a better connection than asking the parents to sign onto the portal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Universal Preschool.
Yes, I will start. I see you two. I studied the films from the last board meeting. And I got my warriors here, so I don't want any tricky questions from the high school seniors here.
And this president of the board, I'm going to tell you, lay it on him.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Well protected, okay? Oh, I did this, right? Okay. So we're, we're here tonight because we just need to do a little additional appropriation. It's called a supplemental budget. It's required by state law. And this one is related to Fund 19, which is Universal Preschool. It's a new fund, so this adjustment is not unexpected. And we have money within that same fund, so this is no big deal. It's not a freak-out, right? We just are going to need you in two weeks to affirm it and sign it. And then we're in compliance as to how the accounting needs to work for the state. So next slide, please. Okay, I'll do this slide, okay? So school districts are statutorily required to not exceed the budget, the expenses that were budgeted. In this fund, we're a little over in terms of our expenses. So that's why we're here in front of you to get a supplemental budget approved. Next slide. Oh, do I do this? Okay, we're basically, this is the summary slide. We're requesting an extra $875,000. You want to do that one?
Sure.
I can't even read that.
Spencer McKay, Budget Manager. $800,000 may sound like a lot, but in reality is that we also brought in $800,000 more than we were expecting. So the amount that we budgeted back in January is just lower than we were expecting on both sides. The amount we spend and the amount that we brought in. And so this is just to adjust for that. And then we have a little bit of fund balance in this fund as well. That's the number of the bomb we'll be ending with. So they're essentially under budget by $195,000.
So we're, we're asking that, that you release from the, let's just call it unassigned fund balance in that fund, in Fund 19. We're not mixing funds. And just doing a line item move, we do that $875,000. And when that all washes out on the closeout, we'll begin July 1 with $194,000 for the ending fund balance. So it just is a mid-course correction because it's a new fund. And is that, yes, questions?
Okay, let's start with the student board. Do you guys have any questions here? Good ones, lots of questions, it's fine. So you're aware about the state and what they did is they, we now have Universal Pre-K. So we've had to find facilities to put the preschoolers and of course, there's expenses that are involved with it and they're trying to adjust the balance. And I don't know if you guys have had a lot of work with budgeting where, you know, sometimes the end of the month comes, you know, later than the end of the money. So, does the board have any questions? Darn it, I kind of like to watch Dr. Paul Murray sweat.
I'm not happy you didn't say I was your favorite in that other meeting. Oh, we stay, yeah.
It literally is just that we have money that we get to operate UPK. The amount of money we spent to operate UPK is actually also about what, $194,000 less than what the state paid us to operate UPK. But because we didn't know what we were going to get, we couldn't account for that initially when we did our budget. Because the state also hadn't figured out all their math yet in a new program.
Yeah.
So this is basically standard for education when we have this type of thing happen.
Last year, I really, I viewed Universal Pre-K as year zero because all throughout the year, even the state kind of seemed unsure on what they were going to give us. So I'm viewing this year as year one and hopefully it's a little more organized.
It's been kind of interesting because sometimes we have a state mandate that will come down, but that doesn't mean they're going to fully fund that state mandate. It happens a great deal in special education. And so sometimes the state will say, you must do this, but they don't necessarily fund the requirement they set. So I'm really grateful that you guys work on getting the numbers to balance.
Thank you. That's not, there's another, is there another presentation? Yeah, wasn't that it or no?
I mean, this is all we really need.
I know, this was the front end.
No, we're on student count.
Okay, we had a, we have a little, Lynette, did you not get the little front end presentation?
I didn't submit this one. This one was through, I believe Barbara.
Okay, well.
It's just a summary of this picture right here, is all it is.
So Zhao, hold on.
It's okay. I'll handle it.
I know, but, so we had a, because I'm worried about our flank on this side. This is Zhao Wei. She's our super-duper like secret weapon accountant. And she is big. Yeah, go.
You.
So I'm worried about my flank on this side. And so now I've got two covering my flanks. So you know Spencer, but Zhao, Zhao Wei, is, is our accountant that's been doing all the work and background for charter schools and student count. And we're getting rid of me because, you know, I'm good for comedy. But for all of this, I want Zhao to be here with Spencer. They'll go easy on you, okay? And so I want these two here because this is the future of the district. And they're going to present, but I had this really great front end that didn't make it, but go ahead.
Okay, so this is just where we're tracking our student count right now. You'll see the different trend lines. The, that purple is where we're expected to be. It's the average over the past three years. So that's a normal trend line. So that's going to be the key one and the orange one's going to be the key one because the orange one is where we are currently. The solid is what we've already tracked and then the dashed is a projection. And we've been a little more, thanks to our assist team, they've been tracking student count sooner in the year. So you see this big drop-off in early August where normally it kind of slowly goes down as we get to October. So we're in a little unknown territory as far as trend. We kind of think it's just going to flatten out from here on out. But as of right now, we're tracking to be a little bit under. And so every slide after this is just the different schools and zones broken out. If you want to go through those, I can, or you can. I don't think there's much value in going through each individual one. But that's pretty much it. Up in this top left corner is showing the budget adjustment. Basically saying the difference, this flat line is what we budgeted at, so it's 12,840. And so the difference between 12,840 and 12,677, this is the dollar amount. And that's all that's saying. So really not too much information to present here.
Director Livia Wright?
So, but the prediction on the orange is because you're using prior year slopes, basically, right?
Yeah, so that's why I like the.
Therefore, that 2667 is really an unknowable if we've changed how we're eliminating people from the SIS this year compared to the others, right?
Yeah, so like that, the end of it, we think is lower than what it would actually be because we saw this fall off in early August. So that's where, on our end, we're on a little bit of unknown of what the trend will be.
Right, because it could, if, because that fall off is pretty darn close to the slope that you see kind of at the end when they used to do it, which would actually put us a couple of students above rather than below. So there's no, we won't really know until we get a little further, right?
And I'm going to chime in on this one because I actually have more, more history with this graph than, than these folks that are presenting. We used to see more volatility. We used to see a greater spike in the first couple of weeks of this data. And then we used to see a sharper drop-off at the end of September. We, I went back and looked at the last couple of years. We saw a flatter spike in early August and we saw less decline in late September. And so I am, I am guarding us against believing that that yellow-orange dotted line is going to drop as significantly. I do anticipate that we will be down in the operated portfolio and up overall. And we know why some of that is happening because I've talked to, I've met with those principals and we've talked about what, where we see, there's some very specific places where an earlier presentation about academic performance is, is attractive to a, a class of parents. And so we've seen some movement from our operated schools to some of our charter schools, but we've also seen the reverse. And so we've also seen some inflow from other districts into our district-operated and district charter schools. And so there are dynamics and variables that nobody understands yet, including us. We do not understand them and they make our projections less reliable. And so this is a month out from where our projections look pretty solid. We usually are, we're usually pretty close the last week of September to where we finally end up. But it's going to, it's going to keep, it'll stay wobbly for about three more weeks from now.
And I'm sure you guys have noticed that you start school a little bit earlier than some of your friends in other districts. And sometimes you get it out a little bit later. But in the early 2000s, they did presentations throughout District 49 to introduce kind of a modified year-round schooling. And a lot of the argument back then was for actually retention of academics. So yes, we start sooner. Yes, we get out later, but then we have those really nice breaks in between. And so it was in the early 2000s that they rolled us over to that modified year-round schedule, even though it's not a complete year-round schedule. And so it's not unusual too for people to sign up their kids for District 49 because we do start sooner. And then they sometimes will roll back to the school that they, the school district they actually live in. So those numbers do float around, but just so you know, that was a decision made a long time ago and it was to retain reading skills, writing skills and math skills by not having quite as long of a summer break. So, you know, it really stinks when school starts earlier, but it's really nice when you have the longer fall break and winter break, so. Director Devola?
I know these are their district-operated. Will we also see student count from our charters at some point?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have those numbers too.
We can, we can come back on that, so. Do you want to go over, have you seen this?
I have not seen this part.
Okay, so.
The adults get rusty over the summer too, so just, you know. Oh, Director?
I apologize. It's, you know, it's been a little challenging for me with not having an admin assistant. So I've been, Barbara's been helping out, so I take kind of full responsibility for this not being in the board docs. This is a good primer for us to remember. Where did we end last year when we approved a budget for 24-25? So remember, we were looking for an increase of about 6.8 million expenditures, you know, would equal, you know, what we say we thought they were the budget. Student count flat at 12,840. The unassigned fund balance was increasing by, that should be 500K, 500,000. We reclassified in the fund balance 550 for capital and property insurance. And then the expenditure assumption, this is really a very important part. We normally, when we're budgeting, we assume that we're not going to fill certain positions and things like that so that we look at maybe only having to spend 97% of what we projected to spend, right? So if it's 100 million, we would spend 97 million, 3 million in our pocket. That is not the case if we go to the next slide. So this is what our forecasting model is showing. That from that actual starting point of our first measurement at 13,065 students, we were showing a loss over time of 12,677. It's trending a little bit below that. Our PPR, our per pupil revenue, so what we get per student in our district-run school is still at around $10,800-ish dollars. But because we're down, according to the model, of 163 students in district-run schools, we could be looking at roughly a $2 million shortfall. What happens with that? Well, all of a sudden, that utilization rate of 97%, we're at 100%. So now we've got to really keep our eye on the ball because that 3% cushion has gone away, right? Just by dint of our student count decline. You should know in speaking with other CFOs, they're seeing a 2% drop-off in their revenue. We, before Ron Sprems left, for the 11 years he's been here, he said he's never been here where there's a year where the student-run schools weren't up at least 1% to 2%. So we're in some weird space. We think we have an idea of some of the factors affecting us, right? If we could go to the next slide. So what is happening, right? I, I'm a little bit more optimistic, but it's important that as your financial officer, we do note that somewhere out there, whether that's a 1%, 2%, 3% probability, that we could be looking at what I call the perfect storm, right? What does that mean? You're seeing in the state, the Colorado State Legislature's having a special session. We think the bill will come out. It's kind of revenue neutral to us. It doesn't really impact us per se. However, here's the risk. We have a bad winter. Interest rates don't come down. People get pessimistic. People stop spending. COVID-19's new variant comes up. The perfect storm happens. And then all of a sudden, that budget stabilization factor is back on the table. That negative factor that the legislature uses through the back door to balance the budget. I don't think that's going to be the case because the governor has gone on record. But if the revenue's not there, the revenue's not there. Spencer was really good at doing, you know, looking at the historical research. So for every 100 million of a budget stabilization factor, that's got about a 4 million to the negative hit for our funding. We also see pressures that increase our spending, such as our special ed population. When we have to put an extra dollar into that kind of bucket, so to speak, we're not allowed to take that dollar out next year. So that maintenance of effort, which is our bottom-line commitment, when it goes up, we don't get to go below that. So that's something that's interesting that's happening. And then we do have a worst-case scenario. The good news is it's only a one-time negative hit to us, but CDE is doing this three-year student audit and we could be looking at about a $2.4 million hit on that. This is just complete transparency. We can handle that prior set of factors coming to play. We're trying to really not do anything with, you know, We're trying to really not do anything with, you know, reduction in anything in terms of headcount, right? We're committed to keeping our employee base intact. We did increase, remember, the teacher salary schedule. So repositioning, meaning truing up, could be a challenge this year, if that's something the board still is looking at. I know it's something you're considering. But we first have to see where we are in our, on the October one count to know where we are in our funding, to be prudent. But, um, we have done a lot of kind of, um, risk modeling. We're good. We're, I, I'm more freaked out than the superintendent is and I'm not losing sleep. It's just, I was hoping that we would see the slope of this line not be so steep. What we're hoping is, we have spent a lot of time in the last month cleaning up the data, the student data we have in power school. And then they've got this other thing here in the district called the, the moving class, right? So that's kind of a holding tank for students that we think they're in the district, but they're not showing up. We don't know. They go away. So, so we've worked really hard. We've met with Lisa's team and Kathleen Granis, who's great with Brittany, to really start scrubbing the data. And did Zhao run away? So Zhao checks every Friday, every Monday with that team before we give any data to the superintendent to make sure our numbers are right. So this is what we're dealing with. Every district in the state is probably dealing with the same phenomenon. We're trying to figure it out. Could be there's a increase in homeschooling, whatever. But we are, we are good for this year. Right? So that's where we are. You know, this is the data.
Do you guys have any questions? Go ahead. Kira?
I'm just curious. Um, compared to years past, has this, um, trend, like, is this like a normal thing that's happening from year to year or is it more specific to this year?
Good question. Congratulations. All the budget factors or the student count?
The student count, like, um, well, I guess kind of both, but like more specifically, having the students, like with the slope of this orange line we have here, start at a higher level and then towards like mid-August kind of drop. Like, is that a normal thing that happens every year?
No, yeah, so this, yeah, this drop you're seeing is new this year. Um, that's why that endpoint, we think, is lower than what it'll actually be. Because it's basing a trend off the past three years, which was a different trend line than what we're seeing this year.
What, what we're hoping is, yeah, like, what we're hoping is that because we were really focused on cleaning up data, so if we kind of, would I, um, if we kind of ejected bad data more quickly, that's what we're hoping happened to show the steepness of that line. And then what we hope, as the superintendent said, is the dotted portion flattens out and trends more back to that green line. So that's what we're hoping for. But you'll learn in finance, you can be hopeful, but you have to manage to certain expectations or realities. So we've got a number of contingencies in place. And it just shows that, you know, I would have never expected this. I drive from the west side to here every day. You see all the construction and everything. So it could also be with the new generations that are coming on board. Uh, I, I make this point. I had a dinner I had that I attended. Somebody said pets are the new children and plants are the new pets, right? So on these three-bedroom, four-bedroom homes, we normally would project like a one-point-zero child going to a school. But maybe it's a point four now or a point six. So this is, this is just some weird place we're in. There are a lot of factors and it's a complex system. So we're, we're really going to take the time, especially as we trend more towards October one, to try to understand our model better. And if we have to start fixing it or building a new one, we will. But hopefully this is just some anomaly and it goes away. But that was a good question.
Director Schmidt?
Yeah, first of all, could you send me the missing slides? Or the whole board, actually. Don't just send it to me, send it to everybody.
Yeah, I thought that, I'll get it.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. No, I understand. Um, I want to thank you really for letting us know that this could be a heads-up thing, even though it's just like kind of a snapshot in the point in time. Um, I appreciate that because then that is in the back of our minds until it's resolved on October fourth. You know, that we might need to make adjustments. Um, on the weekly monitoring, now we haven't been notified of that. Are we going to be notified of that or are you just telling us that's the way you do things?
No, it's the student count. So, um, the student count starting in July, yeah, we do, we take, we pull numbers every week.
No, the, the weekly monitoring that you do every week.
So that is the weekly monitoring. Uh, let me hear, please. So we would not expect to notify the board weekly, no. Um, the, the finance team presents to, um, essentially to the cabinet and then we make some decisions based around that, based on this data. Um, but we'll, we'll be presenting something related to this at each of the meetings until typically the first meeting in October. Um, that's when we have the, the best internal view of our enrollment. We still have to do a process, we call it truing up with the state. We won't get our certified enrollment typically until late November or early December. And that's when, that sets us up for coming back to you in January with our first amended budget. So the, the sequence, you kind of have to, you have to think from the last amended budget you approve will be at the May meeting. In order to get there, we have to have a preliminary amended budget in the January meeting. To get there, we have to have s, have a, approved student count. To get there, we have to have an estimated student count. To get there, we have to have the monitoring reports and that's what you're seeing tonight.
Thanks so much. Director Devol?
Just a clarifying question. I know I asked it previously. Uh, when will be, will be able to see the charters? I have charters information here.
Um, we can, we can send that to you, to all of you now. Um, we're just, we, for us in finance, we were concerned about the operated portfolio because from a budget standpoint, that's all that really affects us. Um, the charters, it just flow through money. But we can send that information to all of you guys.
I'm just curious to see how it's affecting our enrollment numbers, whether they're going up or they're also going down. I think that's important for, for us to see.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
So, um, I think the downtrend is for all the school, including, um, the charters. Um, they started, their actual count started total is seven thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. And as of August ten, it, um, came down to seven thousand one hundred and twenty-one. So it's a downtrend for all the school.
But, but I need to clarify, it's a downtrend from July. It is not a downtrend year over year. We have some growth in some of our charter schools and the numbers that Zhao just read do not include goal. Um, I know that from talking with their executive director, goal is actually up, um, maybe close to five hundred students year over year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, their count's now about five thousand something, almost six thousand.
Almost six thousand.
Yeah.
So we will, we do have that data, we'll provide that data, but, uh, as Spencer pointed out, in terms of your fiduciary responsibility and to know what we might have to accommodate in terms of our budget, and this is really a budget task, more so than an enrollment task. Uh, the operated schools are, are all of the importance. The charter schools are, are necessary and they end up being part of our presentation. So when we get to late September and then the final presentation in October, there'll be a fourth section that picks up all of the charter schools and shows you those trends by school and by that part of our portfolio. But thank you to the team. This is, this is what we need for tonight.
That was my question. You answered when it was coming, so thank you.
Director Heil?
So what I heard earlier was that every single year that Ron Sprems was working with us, we saw an increase in student count. And now that we've lost him, we've lost students. So clearly, Ron was bringing in a lot of students and we need to see what we can do to bring him back. So I want to caution everybody because what I'm hearing is that we are changing the way that we have been, um, collecting and analyzing the data since this year began for the student count. And because of that, this, you know, historical model that we're, we're forecasting with is, you know, it's different.
We're, we're doing the same. Right, we're, our pros, whoa.
You can't play with our toys anymore. You're, you're going to break them.
You know, that Ron Sprems was kind of a, a low blow, but maybe he jumped shit because he saw the trend and didn't want to be, you know, whatever. But we're sad to see Ron go. Um, our process hasn't changed. The model hasn't changed. What we have been doing when we saw this is like, what is the integrity of the data in our system, right? Because we're seeing some things with challenges we are going to fix, right? Uh, I mean, it's coming out from that CDE audit where they're looking at the last three years. A lot of that is either attendance-driven or whatever. So with, with Lisa now over SIS, and I don't want to speak for, for, for Lisa, but they are very focused now on working with the zone leaders and the principals in cleaning up our data. Because if we have bad data in that, that what we call the oracle of power school, we pull that data to run our model. So if that data's bad, our model's going to be not accurate. So we're just trying to get back to real data integrity.
Yeah, and that's basically what I'm referring to, is there are new processes, a new emphasis on making sure that the data is cleaner upfront. That, that may not have been happening before, so we get some signal noise, uh, early on and then that's what drives the, the decline towards the, the final count. So because we are doing things different, then we can expect that that curve to behave differently. And so our model is based on previous practices. The model is currently projecting a one-point-three percent decline. So that would, you know, affect what we can do, um, especially for the, uh, the teacher adjustments for this staff.
Remember, that decline is district-run schools.
Right.
Right? Because that drives our budget.
Right.
So.
So we are anticipating it to be flat and if it stays flat, then we can stay the course for what we approved, um, last school year for, um, for that adjustment. Um, but, uh, something definitely for our teachers to keep an eye on.
Director Livia Wright?
So this is kind of a longer-term comment, again, more than a question, but in your presentation about kind of some of the things we're facing, you said every district in the state is facing this. District forty-nine is in a little bit of a different position than most other districts in the state. And I'm going to call out Andy Holloman and Tammy Harold and Dave Martin. I have to actually say something positive there too. Um, and their intent to ensure that we had a fully funded, um, baseline. So we are the, I think, one of the only districts in the state that doesn't have to borrow money from the state to make our budget until the funding comes. What that means is we actually do have a true fund balance that is available, that could not last forever to cover a hiccup or a state problem, but was built in part because they were the board that experienced the last time the state had to do a clawback. And they have put our district in a position to be able to ride that storm a little bit better than any other district in the state. And that's why when you look at the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, at, at the end of all of our expenditures, which is a little more complex than the end of the year, um, the fact that we have funds there that we're not spending is a good thing. We've been beat up for it, um, by some folks in the past. That isn't a bad thing. This is why that money is there. It's there so that we can say, whoa, we're not losing sleep night, at night yet. And it's, other districts don't have that cushion that we have not to ride forever, but to maybe ride the little hiccup in the beginning. And so I want to say thank you to prior boards that made sure that that happened. And to remind folks, that's why we don't want to spend it too far down, um, when we, we have things that we really want to fund.
No, they're excellent points. And I know that there's been a lot of discussion on matriculation rates where they used to forecast, if you're building this many rooftops, you're going to get this many students. And we actually talked about that in one of the development meetings, that that doesn't necessarily true out. That just because you've had this many housing units come on, doesn't mean you're going to get the same kind of bump in student growth that historically was there. Um, also, if I remember correctly, one of the first times that I met with you, Dr. Trottenberg, you talked about wanting a bigger buffer just to have a bigger safety net for that too. And this is just proving out what you said the first time that we met and had a conversation. And it's really hard to do because I think that we're very fiscally responsible with our funds. And, um, I like that we don't have to do the gap funding through the state until the, the funds come in. So I just want to, if there's no more questions, I want to say thank you to all the hard work you're doing. And, uh, just keep up the good work, especially with cleaning up the data.
I, I just really want to thank the board. I've said this before, you have no idea how one, important it is and how it builds confidence to our younger members of our team to be able to get in front of you and not, you know, and, and present the data that they're truly the experts on. Like, I think Zhao has been working on charter school data the moment she stepped in, right? And remember, she came from the private sector. She didn't even know, like, what a charter was or whatever. So we're really lucky to have such, not you, get away, such quality, such quality people. Truly young people. It's great to see. So, thank you. Truly appreciate it. Good job.
Graduation dates and times.
Okay, this is such a short item. I'm just going to stay here at my, uh, my chair. Um, and I think we could be, we could be done by seven fifty. Um, there was mild interest in perhaps locking our major high schools into a specific time. We explored that and that interest faded pretty quickly. And so we are going to continue with a process that has served us well for over a decade with a, a brief interlude, uh, when we went away to, to an outdoor graduation model. We're back at World Arena. We're going to continue on that Memorial Day Friday. Uh, our schools this year will graduate at the same timeframes. And so we will have Falcon first off at nine AM, Vista at one, and then Sand Creek at five. In two weeks, when you, uh, presumably vote to approve this, that will lock people in and they can start buying tickets and renting Airbnbs and making restaurant reservations. And so I would invite you to, uh, affirm what the high school principals and the zone superintendents have requested and approved and we'll get back on our rotation.
And I assume, because that was when we moved over there, it was both ADA compliance because some of the outdoor, first of all, that we can have something called weather that can interfere with things, but also the accessibility. Um, I'm just curious, I, I assume that the communications team liked having a staging point with the World Arena graduations. And so overall, do you think it went well, Peter?
Uh, the World Arena has been a, a great partner and our, our graduations are, are much more predictable. I will say, they're not as interesting, um, but maybe interesting is what we want out of graduation. Maybe what you want is predictable, easy parking and good sound systems. And, and we've had those things historically at World Arena and we had them again last spring. And I think a lot of us felt grateful not to be watching the weather reports or watching the sky other than, do I have to have an umbrella to get back out to my car?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that my two daughters who graduated during storms in each of their years, one of whom had the sound system short out so we couldn't hear the speakers or anything, are insanely jealous that their brother, who might not even choose to walk because he doesn't like being the center of attention, gets to graduate inside. Um, they would prefer I make him graduate outside like they had to. And I'm like, sorry, guys. Director Devol? Director DiVola?
Yes, I was wondering if, because I know some, there were some complaints about traffic flow from between the graduations of exiting and entering at the same time. Is there a way for us to solve that issue, or what do you foresee with that?
I would, I would say generally, there's not. The World Arena is a lot better than we are at knowing their own traffic pattern. They work with both county and city law enforcement, and they are, whatever is perfectly efficient, they're very close to perfectly efficient. And generally, if people are, the entrance and exit are intentionally separated, and so we have some backlog as people leave, but generally, people are able to get in. We very rarely have problems on the entry side of things. It has been generally more on the exit, and that's by design, because it's a much bigger deal to take longer getting home than to miss the first ten minutes or the processional or something, as I experienced this year. So that was, that was by design, and I think that's probably how it'll need to stay, unless the World Arena does something significant with their inflow or outflow. But I suspect, because it's been that way as many years as I've been going to the ceremonies there, I suspect it'll probably be pretty similar next year.
Director Heil?
Yeah, I think the one thing that we have under our control in order to assist with that is to just be very mindful of our timing, to make sure that, you know, we're not running over on some of the graduations, so that there's plenty of time for egress before the next folks come in.
And then, you know, they're saying that they're not as interesting, but I got to tell you, there's things that happen behind the scenes. There's flying robes, okay? There could have been one board member who will not be identified, who had to be zipped up as they're getting ready to go up. There may have been a superintendent who was a little bit late getting there, and there was a flying robe coming down the aisle, so. And we do have another member who shows up at the very last minute, a member of the cabinet, who is traditionally showing up just like a minute before graduation starts, who doesn't even know I'm talking about him. So please know that it's not completely boring during those graduations. Do you guys have any questions or comments about graduation locations or anything?
I'm just curious, because my brother graduated at the World Arena in 2017, and then my sisters both graduated at the, I don't even remember the team, the Vibe Stadium, in 2020 and 2023. And it definitely, it's a different experience. And then I went back to the World Arena to play with the orchestra last year, and yes, the weather cooperated much better under a roof, right? But I was just curious if part of the reason why we switched back to the World Arena, because it is farther away from our high schools, like, would there be any, like, is it more difficult to, like, reserve the baseball stadium, or is it easier to get with the World Arena because there are connections, or was it purely because of, like, weather interests that you switched back?
It was certainly not purely weather. That was a factor. Here's the bottom line. The stadium at UC Health Field is not expert at holding those kinds of large, diverse population, multi-individuals with access needs. They're just, that's not their, that's not their strength. That's not their core mission. Whereas the World Arena, they will run twenty-five graduation ceremonies every year, and so we get the advantage of their expertise, their partnership, and so in addition to the challenges of things changing every year, and the weather challenges, and even more significant parking management, right? If you compare the parking at the two venues, the parking at World Arena, and especially the exit at World Arena, is far, far smoother and safer. And so it was, it was a multiple factors, but mostly, it was that the people that end up being in charge of managing these commencements, they strongly preferred returning to the World Arena, and so we should let smart people give us guidance, and when we're smart, we'll follow it.
Well, and when we were at Vibe Stadium, there were a couple incidents where we actually had to help the students up the stairs to receive their diploma because of physical challenges, and so the World Arena is better suited for people who need a little extra help as well. So are there any other questions? Then we are adjourned.